And just for the record, the meeting will be recorded and we're gonna be live on Facebook. And whenever you're ready, Mayor. Ready, Mayor?
Yep.
Okay, whenever you're ready, you can start the meeting.
Alright. It is seven o'clock on Monday, August twenty-four, two thousand and twenty. This is a duly called regular council meeting of the town of Anthony, Texas, posted in accordance with section five-five-one dot zero-zero-two and five-five-one dot zero-four-one of the Open Meetings Act of the Texas Government Code. Public participation during the portion of the Agenda for Public Comment is limited to that portion only, except that if the citizen's comments relate to a topic or subject covered under an Agenda item, the citizen shall wait to speak until the Agenda item comes up for discussion. At all other times during the council meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the presiding officer. Uh, Ms. Gonzalez, can we go ahead and do a call-in check, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Garcia? Something happened.
There you go. So whenever you're gonna touch deposit, just.
Well, it stopped and it will re. Okay, got it. Sorry, fellas.
Okay, and for call check, Councilman Garcia?
Okay, just your line.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir. The quality is really bad.
You know. What the thing is is. You guys. Take me sure Joe can hear, because I don't think I can. There you go. Got it. Sorry, guys. Joe, can you hear us? Mr. Garcia?
Yes, I could hear you.
There you go.
Okay, so for a call check, uh, Councilman Garcia? Present, Councilman Alfaro?
Here.
Mayor.
Yes, I could hear you.
Mayor Pro-Ten Weeks?
Yes.
And Councilman Chavez, present?
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Okay, uh, moving on to open forum for the public, limited to two minutes. Ms. Gonzalez, did anybody contact you about joining us in open forum?
No, sir, nobody requested to join for the open forum.
Okay, please let the record reflect, we had nobody reach out for open forum. Uh, moving on to item five, review and action on the minutes of regular council meeting, August tenth, two thousand and twenty. Any comments from council?
Move to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Weeks, do I have a second? Second is by Councilman Alfaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Right now, moving on to item six, discussion, consideration and action on the following new business. Item one, discussion, consideration and action on approving carport to within six feet of the front setback at seven-twelve Pymus Street.
Mayor, I have, um, Inspector Ron Roth on the phone, and he would like to speak for that line item in reference to a carport.
Okay, sounds good.
Ron, are you there?
Um, yes, ma'am. Um, the, the, uh, plan that, uh, majority they, uh, submitted, it's a twenty-by-twenty carport. Uh, it's a turn and a half, and it is to within six feet of the property line. So it seems to fall in under the conditions that are, uh, in the ordinance. I, I have no problems with it.
Any questions or comments from council?
Ron, is this just like the one we approved last week, just different address?
Different address, same size, uh, different material. Uh, the one from last week was the stick frame, wooden stucco. Uh, this one's going to be metal.
Do I have a motion on the table? If there's no, if there's no further question?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Weeks, seconded by Councilman Alfaro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Three to zero.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, sir.
Good night.
Item number two is basically discussions, consideration and action, action on purchasing QuickBooks Desktop for two thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents from General Fund Line Item seventy-three fifteen on the capital improvements. Um, we had met some time back, and as you guys know, uh, the transition from the desktop to the online QuickBooks was pretty much catastrophic. We ended up losing a lot of information. Uh, things weren't, uh, transitioned or, uh, transferred properly, and it's kind of been a headache, you know, uh, working through all the online stuff. Um, basically, you know, this was a, a discussion that we had with our auditors about moving back and transitioning back over to the desktop. Um, and that's something that they were in agreement and in support of us doing, and of course, creating a new chart of accounts. So we did take a look at what, you know, was available in the reserve funds, uh, and our contingency line items. And at this point, both, uh, neither the water nor the, uh, general fund have any funds available in the contingency. So we wanted to be able to, uh, make a, uh, recommendation or ask for approval in pulling it out of the capital improvements, uh, line item, because, uh, that funding source still has a good significant amount of, uh, funding available. Comments or questions?
Is this gonna help our accountant there, Mr. Mayor? Because you got five user licenses, so five people will be accessing the accounting system, is that what we're looking at?
Uh, yes, sir, ideally. Um, reason why, like we said, we're moving forward with that is because we're pretty much gonna wipe the slate clean, uh, books-wise, um, and we're gonna start over fresh and brand-new. Of course, we're gonna keep on the online stuff for a bit until the auditors are done, and then we've been able to extract and download all the necessary and relevant information. Um, but yeah, the online stuff has just been so problematic, and it's been an overall mess, even with trying to get, uh, tech support for the online stuff to address certain issues that we've been having, that's been kind of happening on a, on a national level. Um, it, it, it's a lot more, um, time-consuming, and second is, uh, they don't know when they're gonna be, uh, fixing some of those bugs. So we're kind of, ideally, we'd rather just go to a desktop version, something that's in-house, more secure and stays secure with limited access.
Great, this is a one-year license, is what we're looking at?
Uh, correct.
So this will be added to our dues and subscriptions and stuff, uh, on an annual basis.
Okay, great.
Any other questions from coun- or council? Do I have a motion on the table? If there's no further comment?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Alfaro, seconded by Councilman Weeks. Uh, Mayor Pro-Ten Weeks to approve the two thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents for, uh, the new, uh, QuickBooks Desktop, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries three to zero. Moving on to item three, discussion, consideration and action on amending the promotional policy for the Anthony, Texas Police Department, Chief Enriquez.
As you all know, we have a collective bargaining in place, and what this, um, policy is, is pretty much outdated with what we have currently in place. It was forwarded over to Legal and HR. Uh, Legal took a look at it, there was some issues with it, but he was subsequently able to correct it. We had a telephonic, uh, meeting about the, the do's and don'ts and, and the rights and wrongs, and in order to keep the city out of liability, Henry, uh, moved around some of the stuff to do, um, um, Henry, can you touch on a little bit on that?
Chief, sorry, it took a little while to find my unmute. Um, Mayor, council members, um, what we did is just moved the, played with the language a little bit, uh, from what the chief had originally, um, proposed. Uh, so what we ultimately agreed on, and that to reduce any, you know, minimize any potential liability that the city may have, is the language that shows up on page two of your, um, of the proposed policy that you received on your packet. On page two, uh, paragraph, it's subpart C, uh, paragraph eight, basically, it allows the chief to try to fill any position that may be open in-house, uh, giving the, um, you know, the police officers in-house an opportunity to, um, to buy for a position, uh, as a promotion. If that is not possible, then it allows the chief to go out outside the department and through the advertising process and try to fill, you know, that position. And then if that fails as well, the candidacy, when I say fails, if the candidates just don't, uh, you, you know, he doesn't have candidates that, that, uh, apply for the position, or the candidates that did apply don't meet the qualifications, uh, similar to what happened with, when if, when he went in-house through a promotion, then it allows the, the chief to fill the position by appointment uh, with ratification from the, uh, from you all, of course, from the town council. So that's what that, we agree that this is the best approach on it, so that you can give the, give the officers in-house in the department, um, an opportunity to buy for the position, and if not, then, you know, you give third parties outside of the department, department a similar opportunity, and then if not, then the chief can go ahead and appoint somebody so that you can fill that, that necessary position. We also made another revision, uh, to, uh, what's required for someone to meet the, um, qualifications for lieutenant, and you'll find that on page four. And basically, the chief wanted some additional requirements on there that, you know, I didn't see any issues with, uh, which, what includes a passing a background investigation. The candidate must be in good standing with the department and not, not have any disciplinary matterings in the last year. He has to display a good moral and ethical demeanor, and must be in good standing with the community. So those are the revisions that you see on page four. And I believe there was one other revision, a minor one. For some reason, that comes to my chief, or did that cover all of them, chief?
It would, it has something to do, uh, with the lieutenant being seven years as an in-law enforcement, unless they were in our own agency, then it's five. It used to say five, and you guys changed it to seven. Just so.
Correct, and, and the reason being because we want, um, managerial experience, because they're gonna, there, our lieutenant position is equivalent to that of a deputy chief in, in large organizations. So that's why we feel that at that point, they would have more of the experience, not only supervising, but managerial-wise and administratively to be able to, to adhere to some of the requirements set forth by the city. So I think that, that, that's key, because if not, we can be getting officers that are basically been five years in and have not, uh, held any type of, uh, managerial experience, and it can be somewhat detrimental to the community, and that's something that we want to avoid immensely. And then in another revision that we made was, uh, for the, uh, the standing, if we have an individual that scored and passed not only the written exam, but the, but the, um, oral board, and he is not selected, he or she is not selected, then that list would be active for six months. It was a year, but I think that over the course of one year, a lot of things can, can change, not only within the person, but, um, within their, their train of thought and the way they are. So I feel that within six months, it's, it's within enough time, if not, they can have, they can buy again and retest for the position. So those were the changes.
Any questions from council, any other comments? Steve, chief, these, uh, this, um, move doesn't affect or anything on the collective bargaining agreement, does it?
No, sir, because right now, that's why it was forwarded over to Legal. Because right now, it, the, the only subsection that the collective bargaining has is that we would follow what the, um, current promotional policy is, so this would fall in place. That's why it was forwarded to you all and to Legal, so we can make sure we follow in those parameters, which is something that, uh, that Henry, uh, pointed out, and we were able to do so, and then we went a step further, uh, under Henry's direction, and I forwarded it over to Tommy. Tommy reviewed it, and he said, yeah, we, we're good to go.
Okay. So the questions you're gonna ask when the, when you hire a chief is regarding how much experience they have in regards to being managers and whatnot?
Right, sir.
Right, okay.
And you know what, that's, I'm really glad, you know, that, uh, you went and moved forward with this, chief, because, you know, some of the things that we've been seeing and going on, where some of these led to this discussion and overall chief wanting to implement this is because of the fact that we do wanna establish, you know, the accountability, but we also wanna make sure that the individuals that are moving up into these supervisory roles have the necessary experience, first of all, and time within the department to be able to make those, you know, calls administratively, um, and also, you know, uh, overall, you know, lead, lead and provide, uh, a good, uh, leadership material um, within the department.
Right, and one of the, one of the key reasons, more so now than ever, was something that the mayor pointed out to me on Thursday. On Thursday, when I met with him, I was on vacation for the whole week, and he mentioned there was an incident that occurred on Eduardo and Tamarisk, and he's like, I was not made aware, and there was a comment that bothered me that was told to him, and I'm like, um, the, that it was told to him that the information wasn't related to me, so I couldn't relate to the mayor. But again, that's because we, we failed to have the adequate supervisors on duty to be able to relay that information up the chain, so I can give it across. So, and not only, because we were, we're lacking supervisors, um, on, on the evening graveyard shift, um, we did not seem, or we did not look like if we knew what was going on when the individuals that were there, and no fault of their own, because their, their own duty and responsibility is to be officers, their duty and responsibility wasn't to notify anyone else, as a supervisor's duty and responsibility would be to notify up the chain. So I would have been able to notify the mayor. So in essence, when he gets questioned by the constituents, he has the information to relay back to him versus him standing, standing back and saying, well, I don't know. Because when he told me, I told him, I told him the same question, I don't know, because information wasn't relayed back to me, so we need those key individuals, like Henry says and like Louis says, to be able to make those decisions, like the mayor says, to relay that information and make sure we have the community's best interest.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions or comments from council? If no further discussion, do I have a motion on the table?
Move to approve.
I have a motion made by Mayor Pro-Ten Weeks, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Alfaro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, chief. Moving on to, uh, item four, presentation and submission of proposed tax rate, no new revenue tax and voter approval tax rate for fiscal year twenty, 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 twenty-one. Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir, we needed to present the new tax rates for this next fiscal year, which you could all find on your packet, the different, um, tax that are being proposed. Which, just like Mayor stated, the proposed tax rate, the no new revenue tax rate, voters' approval tax rate, and this will be, let's see, the no new revenue will be basically the same without increasing and staying the same as last year. Um, and all we need to, right now, is we'll, we'll be adopting the new tax rate September fourteenth. I will be having a public hearing then, but right now, as of right now, we just wanna decide on which one are you all going to be, uh, selecting for this next year.
Questions, the floor is open to the council. Any comments? As you guys know, uh, with what we learned, uh, through the courses and the legislative sessions, uh, in previous years and at TML, um, they switched that, you know, now they labeled it a no new revenue tax and then a voter-approved tax rate. Um, ideally, you know, we can still go with a minimal increase, but due to everything kind of going on with COVID, the new water rate increases, um, I think the town is in a good financial, uh, in, in good financial standing, that, you know, there really is no need to go with an increase uh, on, on the, uh, overall tax rate. Um, so it would be my recommendation to council, uh, to move forward and support a no new revenue, uh, tax rate. Any other questions, comments? Nothing from anybody?
Yeah, okay. I'm motion to approve.
One second. Henry, on this one, it was more ideally a presentation and submission, or were, uh, was there anything that was decided on, uh, today?
No, Mayor, because it still has to go up for a public hearing, and then eventually you all have to. But it's just the presentation and submission, just to get. And so what Norma wanted to do was to just kind of get a general idea. Obviously, you all aren't, uh, voting on it or taking any action on it, so, um, just so that you all are aware what the different rates are, obviously, that you see on, on the packet and the supporting documents, uh, which Norma covered, the proposed tax rate, the no new revenue tax rate, the voter-approved tax rate, and the de minimis rate. Just one thing for you all to keep in mind, that the, if you all do down the road, uh, consider, take action on the no new revenue tax rate, which is, matches obviously the proposed tax rate. Um, it does exceed the voter-approved tax rate, uh, amount, as you all can see, right? It's a, uh, zero-point-seven-one, zero-seven-eight-one is the no, no new revenue tax rate, uh, and then the voter-approved tax rate is zero-point-five-seven-one-two-one-five. So as you probably all are aware, is since it exceeds, if you do all move forward with the no new revenue tax rate, and since it exceeds the voter-approved tax rate, what that means is that, uh, one of your constituents, uh, could, um, file a written request with the city to have a vote on it. Okay, so, because it exceeds the, uh, voter-approved tax rate, and then it would have to be put on the ballot and take, and voted on. Okay, so, yeah, obviously, if it does not exceed the voter-approved tax rate, let's say you just move forward with just the voter-approved tax rate, or, of course, then it, it, then you won't need, uh, then it could, the constituents, your constituents wouldn't have and the, um, wouldn't have the authority to request a, or the option, I should say, to request, make a writ, written request to the city to have it placed on the ballot. Only if it exceeds the voter-approved rate is that they can make that request, and then you will have to put it on the ballot. Uh, I hope I'm making myself clear, I, I know it was a little convoluted there, but just wanted to point that out for you guys.
Thank you, Henry, that was one of the things that we were looking at and talking with Al Paso on how, you know, they're labeling and talking about the no new tax rate, how it was exceeding the voter-approved. Um, but that's just some of the things that make all that, uh, a little bit too complicated, in my opinion.
You all have any questions, I'll try to answer the questions.
Questions, gentlemen? Nothing? Alright. Wanna go ahead and wrap up with that. Moving on to departmental reports for streets. Everett and I were talking with, uh, when we were meeting to discuss and look at some of the budget numbers. Uh, we did hear from the West Side rep, George Orhead. Um, and at this point, he still wants us, I still haven't submitted, uh, the letter, um, in taking over Wildcat, uh, yet, for the landscaping project, because, uh, there's still a couple of things that we need, you know, cleaned up and finished up, uh, there with the, uh, gateway to Texas sign, um, and things like that, but that's already been taken care of. I did speak to them, they are trying to get the company, um, with, uh, that employed the individual who had lost his life in that accident under I-ten, um, to go ahead and get up or do some type of cleanup project to get the rest of that white stuff and the substance that is still under the bridge cleaned up. Um, everything moving forward with FM nineteen oh-five is still on schedule and set to be done. Um, you know, spring and summer of two thousand twenty-one, uh, so hopefully, we'll get that going and, and finalized, uh, with all the, uh, initial designs. And then, um, other than that, you know, we do got some potholes and things that we do gotta fix and look at here in town, uh, but everything else is pretty much on schedule. Uh, they are working on Poplar Street already and getting the sidewalks and stuff going. So hopefully, uh, we did hear from Renee from, uh, Anthony, A-I-S-D, and we are looking at trying to get that done, uh, by the time that they let into school, at least by that second week. So Everett's been coordinating and keeping up to date with the engineers and, uh, the allied paving contractors. Um, but that's pretty much it at this moment. Um, any questions or comments from council? Moving on to, uh, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Harkes?
Uh, like you mentioned earlier, uh, Mayor, the lights on the park, they're done. We did, uh, the one-stop, well, Electric did a wonderful job. We'll put in all those lights, and, uh, you guys need to actually go see them and ride on there. It, it just brought up the park, lighted up real nice. And as far as like, for that, uh, parks, that's it. Or did you have anything else, Mayor?
Nope, uh, everything was pretty much completed on that. We've been hearing a lot of, uh, good comments from the residents, just kind of trying to give people, uh, an idea and showing them what we're trying to do in regards to quality of life projects and overall, uh, capital improvement projects. You know, we definitely wanna, you know, uh, do kind of a facelift to the town of Anthony, increase overall interest. Uh, but that's pretty much it for now. Uh, I don't have any. Uh, I don't have anything else to add. Uh, we are gonna go ahead and move on to item C, police and fire. Chief Enriquez.
Over the past, uh, three months, I was getting with Detective Charal, he's also our crime analyst, our U C R guru. Um, I sat down with him today, we have seen about a forty percent increase. On meth users, um, and transients in our areas. We're trying to do as much as we can to encourage them to move on their way. Eh, even if that includes giving them the rights somewhere where they need to be. The only reason being is because we're firm believers that if we allow them, um, to come into the, eh, stay in the area. And, um, not, and there's nothing that we can provide for them, no, no services that we can provide for them such as shelters or homeless places. Anything of that sort, so we give them a right to wherever they need to go and that, that helps us out. Um, but the majority that we've been seeing and the tr- traveling population, we've been seeing a lot of, uh. People with methamphetamines, um, marijuana, I mean, we're going through marijuana kits. I think a whole kit, we're going through, um, a kit a week. So I mean, we're seeing a, a high, high increase, like I said, we've increased about maybe forty percent. Um, I don't know how much more since COVID started, but these guys have been out there very, very extremely busy.
Thank you, chief. I have noticed that van, uh, parked in the park, uh, very regularly and also that truck up there by the Don Carbone. Uh, in that empty lot, I, I, I've definitely had an eye on them for a while. Um, but as long as, you know, everybody's safe and nobody's causing any issues or anything like that, I think we should be, uh, fine for now. Um, anything else on the, the local, uh, residential neighborhoods, chief? Any issues with, uh, any of the residents, uh, how are we on with code enforcement and stuff like that?
The officers are, we're, we're trying to get to all, all the codes. Um, what has been helping us is that Ron's been going there regularly and now that Ron has a, a town email. It's easier for us to communicate with him, so he's able to give the officers directions. So they, we've been out there trying to enforce and what we do is we try to have the public educate. And we post it on our Facebook. I know we get a lot of backlash to say, well, you guys should be enforcing something else or whatever and. But we give them the heads up to say, hey, this week we're enforcing X, Y, and Z. In an effort for them to know that we're gonna be out there enforcing, so they can comply with it. And we don't have to stop, you know, and pretty much tell them. Um, it's just a, a learning curve for everybody. So the officers have been out there, I mean, you know, it, it, it gets tedious sometimes. And I know we've had, uh, people calling us and emailing us and they just know. Well, you guys have come into my house, but yet down the street, there's all these other homes. Um, well, unfortunately, we go and knock at the homes. But since we don't have a parking, uh, policy in place, we can't cite vehicles. Because we don't have a parking enforcement division that can go boot the vehicles. So we have to, my officers have been told that they need to cite the owner of the vehicles, that means physically. And, uh, if they don't knock, well, we can't issue the, the citation to the vehicle because. Pretty much it's gonna go nowhere. Correct, Henry, on the court site, that'll go nowhere.
That's correct, chief.
So, um, so that's why a lot of people get frustrated with us, but I hope that they understand that we have to make. Sure that we make contact with the people and then also, because if it's not their vehicle, why are we gonna cite the vehicle? Why are we gonna cite the homeowner and, and you know, and we're not doing our due diligence by doing the proper investigation to find out who vehicle does it belong to. It might be, you know, the neighbors for all we know, so, I mean. We just ask for the community's patience, but we're out there. I did wanna ask mayor, do, when you were talking about Georgia Rohed, has he gotten with you by any chance on the speed signs? For the ones we're gonna put on Texas twenty and nineteen oh five?
Yeah, so there was a little bit of miscommunication, so with, uh, guys that were doing their traffic division that was gonna be set up, the, the signs. They put up the posts and then they sent a message that, you know, they're gonna leave the signs to be put up by us and I told them that was fine. But they took off with our signs that day we met, so, uh, they need to track those down and make sure that they install them. And Everett and I think I know which ones, uh, we, we purchased through the town. So if we see some different sign, uh, being posted up, we're definitely gonna reach out to them and, and ask where our signs are. But they should be posting those up, um, from what we heard, whatever, like within the next couple of weeks.
Uh, yes, sir, it was within, actually, two weeks, you're correct, couple of weeks.
One of the things also, guys, is, uh, when we did meet, we did bring up the issues with all the, the landscape rock that's coming on to Sandia. Off of that gateway to Texas sign, um, they are planning when they do the F M nineteen oh five. They are gonna pull the additional funds to build and raise the curb there or a small little retaining wall. That way it keeps the landscape rock on the, uh, designated area and off the roadways, so we are looking at that.
Mayor, with, with that, Traffic Solutions called me, contacted me that we needed to do and that's something that you might wanna include it on your budget. Because for the street department, we have to add a three thousand dollar, um, license fee for a traffic cloud. Which is the people that manage the software for, for the stu-, for the vehicles. I was able to, to have them refresh it, if you will, uh, because we told them what the situation was. So they restarted and you should have seen the email, they restarted the services. So, but.
No, I appreciate it, chief, and we will look at that on budgeting and we'll put that with, uh, street departments and also under licensing and. Thank you. Um, moving on to water and sewer, Mr. Hockes.
Uh, on water and sewer, we're, we're able to, uh, actually I was able to play with, a little bit with the, with the new pumps. And we managed to actually save, uh, I don't know if you remember, like, I brought it back up, uh, to you, mayor, about a year and a half ago. When we, we, we installed one of the new pumps last, it was in, we went up to Park Hill to see if they could. Actually utilize the automatic, uh, system that we have on the skater and we couldn't get it. It will cost us twenty-four, uh, thousand dollars to upgrade. I was able to actually. Just throttle back the, the valve and got it going, so it's working fine, so we got one of those pumps, uh. Working an automatic, so we're set for now. And on the new well, uh, we're supposed to TV it today, we had a video on it. But I, cause on the first vid, when we, first video, we caught it like, uh, some black substance inside the water. And, uh, uh, Mark and I, 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 or Mark, we sent the water to get tested, cause we couldn't. Uh, not, or actually see what it was. And, uh, the water was clear, so we went, well, we found out today, actu- actually the guy with the video, his camera, uh, his camera was doing a short. So it appeared the water was dirty, so we're getting the guy out here again, we'll be taping the, uh, well. And we'll let you know, we'll keep you up, uh, posted on the results in a while, okay?
Sounds good. Um, and that is one of the things that, you know, Everett and these guys have been looking at because we did get arsenic from the new well site. Um, we're pulling arsenic out of, uh, well number three. Um, we're kinda trying to challenge and, you know, get the T C Q, uh, labs and offices. On why they're considering what they pull from one ideal well as an overall violation instead of what the overall, uh, uh.
Average.
What, yeah, the averages, cause it's being mixed all up in the, in, in the, in the towers, um, and stuff. So those are some of the things that we're looking at, uh, addressing and probably trying to get some clarification for them on. Cause we feel, I think it's a little bit, uh, unfair and unjust the way they're, they're pulling the, uh, the, the samples. Um, and how they're, uh, you know, pretty much flagging the town for the arsenic. Uh, cause that's not directly going what into people who are drinking, so. That's one of the things that we'll stay on top of and Eric is doing, uh, Everett's doing a good job at staying on top of, uh, T C Q and those with that guys. But we'll kind of try and follow up and see what, what develops. Um, anything else for water sewer?
Uh, that's about it, man.
Moving on to courts, Mr. Palomares, Norma?
Chief for, uh, chief, uh, mayor, chief as well and, uh, council. For the month of, uh, July, you all may recall that, that report was presented at the last council meeting on August the tenth. So there's no new report, the report for August obviously would be on the next council meeting in, uh, in September. Uh, as far as the hearings in August, they, everything was a success, no issues. Uh, we do have some hearing dates for, uh, September, uh, there. September the second at ten A M and two P M, September the ninth at those same times and then September the sixteen. At the same times as well, which is ten A M and two P M. Those are the court dates that are scheduled for September. Uh, you'll have a report, uh, that will be coming at the next council meeting for the month of August. Uh, nothing further, mayor, council. Norma, unless you have something to add to that, Norma, sorry.
No, sir, that's the only thing I have, the court dates.
Okay, moving on to finance, um, Mr. Weeks.
We have a meeting, uh, Thursday at four fifteen, correct, mayor?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
That's all I got.
Other than that, budget shaping up, guys, uh, things are looking good. Uh, according to the auditors, you know, they are wrapping up with the audit, uh, overall. Um, we were in a better situat-, in a better scenario financially. There's just some things that we need to address, um, that I think have been addressed within this recent, uh, administration, as you know. Uh, the current audit that will be coming out for, what is it, seventeen, eighteen? Uh, you know, was under the old administration, so different, uh, chief financial, uh, individuals that were handling those. Um, no need to be named, uh, but leave it as it is. Uh, other than that, that's pretty much it with finance, moving on to administration. Um, I have nothing really to add on any of that. Other than that, the next regular council meeting is scheduled at six thirty P M on Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Moved to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. Weeks, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, you all, we are, the meeting is adjourned at seven forty-one P M, thank you.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, everybody.